I'm going to call the October the 12th, 2021 meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. And as we always do, we'll take a moment of reflection. And I hope that in our reflections, we will keep the family of Chief Billy Hanks and his wife Terry in your prayers for the tragic loss of their son Dylan. So let's observe a moment of silence, please. If you'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, I'm going to ask Councilwoman John Hicks if she will return the pledge.
The allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Christian States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing done, I will close that portion of it. We're into, we have two public hearings tonight. The first is a community development block grant 2020 consolidated annual performance and evaluation report commonly known as CAAPER. Is there anyone here to address this item? Mr. Walts, come on in and have a seat, please. Come in, have a seat, please.
Good evening. Yes, so the, as you may recall, each year for our community development block grant allocation, we do an annual report, annual plan, and then we also do what is called the CAAPER, which is a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. And that is what we're doing for this past year, for 2020. And, and so the money that we received is going towards infrastructure projects within our park district. We did not spend any last year, so the, the report does not report out any projects or money spent. We anticipate, we had purchased some materials. Public Works is going to be doing a waterline project in the Junkin' Montague neighborhood here in the next few months. So that was in the 2020 plan. It continues in the 2021 plan. So hopefully for the CAAPER for 2021, we will have that to report out. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing done, I will close that portion of the public hearings. Amendments to the planned commercial development in the B3 general business zoning district at 2705 Market Street Northeast by NRV Marketplace LLC to allow multifamily residential uses, increased building height, reduced onsite green space, and reduced residential parking requirements on tax parcel 436-5-1. The property is designated as business commercial on the future land use map 2013 Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this?
Chris Walts, 1370 Reddy Street. I'd just like to point to the town council that this has been advertised for sale, available summer 2020. The residences at Christiansburg Marketplace, buy right zoning, projected units, 150 surface park to 350 high density, available summer 2020. And in the diagram, it even has a little picture of where it's going. So they've been advertising this. The last data that they put in this packet is the third quarter of 2019. So they've been advertising this for investors for two years. And according to them, it's buy right. So do they need a public hearing? That's all. Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Evening, Mayor. Members of council. Steve knows the balls are in associates representing Marketplace. Our client Walt Rector was out of town for previously scheduled vacation that when we delayed a couple of these public hearings, got in the way of that. So he apologizes for not being here tonight, myself, and then Jim Cowan, who's Mr. Rector's attorney on this matter here, to go through the project tonight. We know we've got other things on the agenda. You guys have other things on the agenda, so we'll try to move this pretty quick. Andrew, would you mind pulling up the mapping, please? I just wanted to go through the original asks, what we've gone through, the process with our planning, with the planning commission, and what the final recommendations for planning commission were. As you all know, back a couple of years ago, we came before town council and got a planned commercial development approved, believe the first one, under the new zoning district that would allow for this. The Marketplace Shopping Center, we all know it's under construction right now. Several restaurants, businesses have opened up since that, since that original approval in 2019, including the Starbucks, some of the businesses right here, Aspen Dental. We've got a new restaurant that just had a ribbon cutting, Sandros, the other day. Earth Fair is continuing under construction right now, and then some of our restaurant space in this area right here. As progress on Marketplace has gone on over these last, the last year and a half, two years, I really feel it's a testament to Walt and his team that throughout COVID, through restaurants shutting down and retail shutting down, that they were able to keep the momentum on this center going. There's a lot of excitement that's, that's continued to build around this. And part of what we've seen, what Walt and his team have seen, is some of the demand for some residential. Now, within the planned commercial development, similar to what council approved for Clifton Town Center, which is just down the road, the planned commercial development does allow for residential uses within it as mixed use. As part of that, though, we have to give you what we'd like to do in there, and that's approved through the planned commercial development conditional use permit. So that's what we're asking for. We'll go through a little bit of that today or this evening. But there were, there were four main, four main items that with the amendment we had asked for in our, in our initial application back a couple of months ago. One was the residential use. With the residential use, we have to determine ratios of residential, square footage to commercial ratios of square footage. So we've included that within the, within the application text itself. We've also, the planned commercial development allows for up to 30 units per acre in a planned commercial development. We're, right now, with our current layout that you're seeing here, we're somewhere around that 11 units per acre threshold. As part of what planning commission touched on in our meeting and our, the vote a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, was capping that at 20. 20 units per acre is what the recommended cap is. We said we're at 11 right now, but we would do anything under 30. They felt it inappropriate to set a cap on that. So we're set, and I'll explain that a little bit, a little bit more here. The second ask that we, that we requested within the application was additional building height. We'll look at a couple elevations here in just a second. But there are four new buildings that we've looked, well, several new buildings from the original lease plan that was shown, but four new structures that were shown with the original application a couple of months ago. One, Residence B, which is right here, Residence C, Hotel B, and Hotel A. So this is the Skyline Bank that's under construction right now. This is back where the old Walmart building is, is still sitting. This is the detention pond area right now. So as part of that, we asked for an increase of additional height in these buildings. And you guys should be able to see this in the package that was presented. It's a little hard to see on screen, so I apologize for that. But what you see here are Residence B, this was the one that, that in the last screen was back sitting there on top of where Walmart is now. Residence B, a parking deck, Residence C, and then the Hotel A right there. So what you can see here is we've got sections, and again, it's, it's hard to see. Within the planned commercial development, you're allowed up to 70 feet of height if you have some additional setback areas. We got a relief in that with the first conditional use permit application approval that was given. And what we're asking for now on a couple of these, let's see, Residence B right here, we're showing it at 85-foot height, parking deck B, which would, which would serve as the parking area for Residence B and part of Residence C. At an 85-foot height, Residence C, you see it's a tall building. We've got that set right now at 187 feet. And Hotel A was a little over, it was almost 209 feet. Now that one, I'm going to show you some elevations on. Again, as part of planning commission's recommendation, their recommendation is to not approve anything on this site right here. So this was, this was your tallest building. It's sitting out right on North Franklin there, in between Taco Bell and Arby's. And there were some concerns, obviously, and we had those same concerns too, as we looked at it. Building over top of the stormwater management pond, as well as just the height, based on the smaller, shorter buildings there beside us. So that's the second piece of it. The third piece of our application was asking for a reduction in overall green space. Council had approved, currently by code, by normal code, 20% green space is required for commercial development in the B3 district. Existing out on site before we started was 19%. Council had agreed, and planning commission agreed for us to be able to keep the 19%. As we looked at developing something out on our stormwater management pond here, that obviously ate up a big chunk of open space that was there, green space that we were counting, we had asked for a reduction. That was another item that the planning commission saw fit not to recommend approval on. We had asked to go down to 17 and a half in some revisions to planning commission. Reason being is a lot of these residential structures, if approved, these are upper level, upper levels. So you would have open space and green space, amenity space on these upper, upper levels of some of the, the residential area B, Residence C, and some more there on top of the parking deck. So you can see some pickleball courts and some outdoor patio space. So our, our original conditional use permit approval allows us to count patio space, outdoors recreational space as part of our green space. But again, with the removal of Hotel A from the recommendation, we have enough green space to meet the 19% that was originally approved. So we're sticking with that based on planning commission's recommendation. The second piece of the landscaping was a reduction in our, in our tree count. So right now, we're required to plant one tree per 400, per 400 square feet of green space. A lot of our tree areas, as you all, that, we all know the site. So we've got drainage ditches in the back, along the front, stormwater management here in the front, and, and real close to ride away. So a lot of our trees were having to, to kind of crunch in some of these areas. And we are adding them within green space as well, but we did ask for a reduction to go from one space to 400, one space to, or one tree per 600 square feet of green space. The last piece that we had requested is Residence C is currently planned. Mr. Cowan might be able to speak to this too, if council wants any additional information, as a senior independent living facility, facility home residence. So with that, based on market studies, the normal two cars per unit don't really fit the market of what the residences in, in a type of facility like this that are living, they're, they're still active, they're still, it's, it's not assisted living by any stretch. It is independent living, but most of the residents living in these buildings are operating on one car, with one car or less between, between one or two people. So we have asked for a reduction in the overall parking for those units to a .75 parking spaces per unit. After we went through planning commission, there were a few, a few areas that planning commission wanted us to, to give us some additional information on. One was about the stormwater management facility, if a hotel went over that, which we provided. And I'm sorry, one, one thing to add, we did, when we submitted the, this update to the conditional use permit, we did provide, we had our traffic consultant provide a, a traffic update based on the change of uses from complete commercial space here to this mix of commercial and residential now. It did show an increase in traffic, but the, but Kimberly Horn's final analysis and conclusion was the additional traffic that's generated by this current plan versus the one that was approved in 2019 was, was insignificant to the overall traffic plan. It was not going to kick in or cause any additional traffic studies or signal, signal study to be, to be warranted. So we provided a little bit more information to planning commission on traffic as well. Mr. Clark on planning commission asked us to, asked us to go back and look, as, as council knows, there've been several rezonings that have been approved along this corridor with Clifton Town Center and some other ones, as well as the park that's getting ready to go in. And he wanted us to go back and look to see with the park traffic, would park traffic impact, once it's built out, you know, Saturday game days, when you've got a ton of kids and families up there, if that would impact any of the traffic studies that have been done in this section. Coincidentally, Kimberly Horn had, had worked as a subconsultant for the consultant working on the park itself, and had some, had already done some traffic analysis in this area. So we did provide some updates on that, and I can share that with council as well. But basically during the peak hour, for a recreational park, when you'd have a, a big baseball tournament or a softball tournament, that's happening on the weekends, which a lot of times is not coinciding with some of your peak hours in your residential and your commercial traffic in a development like, like this. So as, as those consults, as Kimberly Horn went back and looked at it, during the peak hour on a Saturday, it would add maybe about two trips, about two vehicles per cycle at the intersection coming each direction. That's a simplified way to say it, but basically, again, it would not create a detrimental impact to the signal with this fully built out and the rest of the development up and down Pepper's Ferry there. So at, at the end of our planning commission meeting a week and a half ago, what planning commission had approved, and I'm not sure, or recommended approval on, Andrew, I didn't know if you had a slide or anything, you were going to pull up on this, but actually, I will, I will scroll through here. These were some renderings that the architect that's working on the project had, had done. So this, this kind of shows looking back into some of the residences. And one thing I'll also add is that, what's my clicker there, Andrew? There we go. There will still be commercial space on the ground floor of these units. So this is not, we're not taking away commercial space and adding residential. The residential is going to be on those upper floors. So you'll still have commercial space, and you can see, you can see in these examples, you know, over top of where you would have green space, you can see some of those rooftop, rooftop green spaces I was talking about earlier. So this is looking back down into some, some of those residents in between. That's looking back in between these two buildings right here. So these would be two new commercial buildings that were not proposed in the original master plan. So I'm just going to scroll through these quickly, just a couple day and night shots. So that's looking back at the taller residential structure there on the left. This is building D, which is where Sandros is located, kind of, kind of off screen here. So that's looking down, down that drive aisle past building D. That's looking down the, down the long line, so, so Earth Fair would be kind of off screen right here. Those are the two new buildings I was just talking about.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
I see quite a few trees here. This is realistic, and this is how it's going to look.
Right, yeah. We still, we will have trees within the parking lot, within our green space, whether they're planted trees or container trees. Anybody that's been out there, Walt has been extremely big on landscaping that entire area. So all the landscaping at the entrances and the entry islands, a lot of, a lot of money's also gone into hardscaping, you know, with, with sidewalk textures and, and outdoor site furnishings. So yes, you know, what you're seeing here, Mr. Upper, would be, would be what would be planned.
Do you want to know at the top of your head how many, in the inner, inner area?
How many? No, no, sir, not. And this, just, just for, just so you guys can see, this was, these were a couple of the renderings we provided to planning commission. So this shows the, the big hotel out in the front. And again, the perspective's kind of hard on these, but you can see from a, from a height standpoint, that was where planning commission had some concern. There was some, you know, commercial potential underneath it as well. But this was the area that, that, that planning commission recommended not to have the, have the hotel at this point. So that's another view, looking back that direction. But at the end of planning commission's meeting, planning commission recommended, I'm sorry, Andrew, were you going to, did you have something to pull up before I interrupted you? So, so basically, those were the requests for the amendments. This is what planning commission had approved. So basically, had approved the residential use, had approved our residential ratios of residential and commercial, capped the number of units at 20 per acre, removed Hotel A, which was the one over the detention pond, included, basically maxing, setting a maximum height of all the buildings except for the ones that we've asked for the additional height on. So they didn't want to set just a, just a random height at 187 feet, and then we come back in later for a building we haven't shown council or planning commission. And we were, we were certainly fine with that. The parking deck included as well, and maintaining the green space at the 19%. They were also okay with the .75 parking spaces and the one per 600 tree count. So I know that was a lot of information. I tried to go through it quick, but I'd be happy to answer questions from council, and Mr. Cowan would be as well.
I have a question for you. Building C, it's going to be 187 feet, correct?
Yes, sir.
Compared to the bank, which I know is on the hill, can you count to me, are they going to be the same height or is it taller?
No, it would still be, it would still be higher than the bank. Yes, sir.
How much higher?
Um, planning commission, I'd say, I'd say, Mr. Bishop, probably still six or seven stories higher than the bank. Now, it's back there in the back, and that's what we talked about with planning commission, and it sits back there. As we looked at, and again, it's, it's hard to tell. We, we were trying to measure some, some, some of the bank elevations off of Google Earth. So it appears to be about 70 feet, which would make sense based on the town standard. And it's sitting probably, well, I'd have to do the math, but it's, the, the building C back in the back is still, still several stories taller than the bank would be.
As far as the property, when we got into building and helping you guys develop this with some of the money for the entrance and stormwater pond, and then some of the, obviously, the entrance for the facility and stuff, which we pay over $1.3 million. I do agree with the planning commission on allowing you guys to build a hotel on the top of the stormwater pond, just because of many, many issues. One of those was the height, another one, you just, I, I was just talking about several weeks ago about the wonderful job they were doing about planting trees on the stormwater pond and how beautiful it was looking. And then the next thing I see was that this was in the identity panel. So while the planning commission took that recommendation out. Another thing was, when you guys were planning this, it was 100% of this was supposed to be commercial in the town, correct? Now we're looking at what, 70% or residential?
If you, if Hotel A, because Hotel A would have counted part of, would have counted towards part of that commercial square footage, if you take that out, I think that's, that sounds right, Ms. Hicks. I've got it in, in our, in our information here as far as what that, what that ratio would be.
Now, I don't see any recommendations here about the parking spots. Are you guys, was it recommended for you guys to have only .75 parking spots per unit?
Just for, just for the senior, just for the, the independent living, not for the market rate. So, so the residences B here, that would be market rate, that would be market rate rental apartments. That would still have to meet the two units or two spaces per unit. It would just be for the independent living that's the 55 to 65 and older.
How many units are we talking about here? As far as the apartments, how many apartments?
320 total units is what's shown on the, on the plan we submitted.
And from Mr., from the last conversation I had with Mr. Rector, he was looking into $1,800 or so in rent per month per unit.
I'm not sure on that. I haven't talked to Walt on that.
And then, so 300 units for the apartments, but those will be required to provide us two parking spots per unit, correct?
Well, there's 320 total livable units between the independent living and the market rate units.
So see, the question is, how many of those are going to be senior residential? And how many of the 300 and some odd are going to be regular resi? Is that what you're asking, Jim?
Yes, yes.
I've got that here. Give me just a second. So it's basically split about 50, yeah, it's split 50/50. So 160, 160 units in each building.
So 160 units will only be required to have .75 per unit?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the other ones, two parking spots per unit?
Yes, ma'am. And the majority of the parking for both of these buildings would, would be within the structured parking decks. I will point out that even with this full development, and I think we stated this in our application material, we're still overparked by town code. With what we're showing, with, with all the development shown on this plan, with the construction of the parking decks and the rest of the parking spaces on the site, we're still overparked by code. So there's still additional parking out there for guest parking, and that's without taking the town allowable 20%. The town allows you to take basically a 20% shared reduction if you've got uses that are, that are sharing spaces throughout the course of the day. That's allowed within the ordinance, but we're not even taking that, that percentage off at this point. We're just taking it as, as straight from the zoning ordinance, and we're still overparked.
But if you're saying that you have overparking, why are you asking for the ordinance?
That's all they need for these units. So anything that we've got extra, you know, outside of the, outside of the deck areas themselves, could be guest parking, could be additional parking for the residences. But from a, Jim, I don't know if you want to add to that piece of the senior.
Sure. Yeah, I think the, that is going to be built for another developer essentially, and their requirement was that they wanted to have the .75. The idea, I guess, is, you know, if you've got, if you've got four people, three of them have a car, and if somebody doesn't, right, one couple may be sharing one car, and if some folks that, they think this is very attractive for seniors, because you can walk to the grocery store, walk to a restaurant, and do some of those things. Some of that ground level commercial, maybe uses that are complementary from an office use standpoint. So that's all they need. We're still overparked, meaning as built now, you probably could use some parking out in the main parking lots for that. They wanted to have their .75 with their buildings that are kind of dedicated to them, to their exclusive use. I guess there's some possibility down the road, depending on what the, the uses of the other, you know, commercial pieces. You know, they don't want to, they don't want to foreclose some additional commercial density later if it's still within their, within their parking and it matches up with what they actually need. Because, you know, part of the view, and I think Steve made a comment, the amount of commercial isn't going down, it's basically just that on the upper floors, we're adding some residential above it and adding some structured parking to, to accommodate that. But I think they're trying to keep that, that flexibility for these commercial uses down the road, because as we've seen just over the history of this, it's changed a little bit.
Have you guys sold this unit already? Do you have a contract with them already?
They have a letter of intent with the folks that want to do the senior living, but they can't do it.
But they're not here right now?
I'm sorry, the buyer?
They are not, yes.
No, no, the buyer's not here to see them. They won't enter a contract till they know whether they have the entitlement to, if they can't sell something, they don't have a right to build yet, so they won't have a real contract.
It'd just be really nice to hear from them, because I'm looking at it from the perspective, I'm a business owner here and also commercial owner of properties here, and we already have a problem downtown Christiansburg with no parking. And, you know, we had this facility over here at the Marketplace that had plenty of parking, but as you can very well see, even Mission Barbecue and Starbucks and everybody else seems to be running out of space right now. I think you guys have done well as far as bringing those restaurants here to town, but at the same time, they are filling out all your parking spots.
Well, all the ones right there by the restaurant. There's a tremendous amount of parking interior. It's just not the closest one to, to the restaurant. I think there's a truth that that area does get a little bit more congested. If you go to town code on parking across the whole site, even with the, the additional retail, as Steve mentioned, without using the 20% credit, there's still excess parking above what, what code is. I think part of what we're seeing is that part over there, where the restaurants are really popular right now, and so they're doing a lot. It's good and bad. It's a lot of traffic, but right, that's a little bit congested.
Do you guys change the age on the contract, well, on the, on the paperwork? Because I know it was mentioned it was 55 plus, but you guys changed, you guys changed it to the 65 lines?
No, they, they, I think the, some of their marketing may be targeted in their demographic for what they get may be hired. There's actually one of the things with the last time, there's a Virginia code. You have to be careful when you use age restrictions. There's a state statute that if you, if you follow to meet the criteria of 55 and older community, you can have an age restricted one, but the states, the state statute uses the 55 number. So if you, your, your goal may be something else, but if you want to age or strip that building, which is what that building, which is what they're doing for that half, you do it under that 55 and older, under that state exception, because if you, if you don't follow that, then it's unlawful to exclude people of certain ages and that's what comes from your, from your property, from your family.
So what you're saying is you're still keeping it 55 plus?
It's 50, it'll be 55 older by code because that's what state law, that's what the state, that's what the code says for, for an age restricted active community. There's another different restriction, there's one other category, but it doesn't fit. I think it's for more of like old care. It's not for this kind of independent living. The active independent living category is either just market, which we have on the ones I was.
Just to make it fair with everybody, as you work in other projects around the town, it has always been us two per unit. And I don't know the, so I guess my concern, and that will not be a concern to you, but I guess to my fellow council members, as far as if we have other developers that will come over here and tell us, okay, we have 55 plus units, does that mean that we don't have to follow the two parking spots per unit? And that's something that we really have to think about because I just want to make sure that we're fair to everyone. And I don't feel like by doing an exclusion of parking spots or to someone, that you're actually not taking into consideration all the other ones that had both been done, including myself. I had to buy overland to make sure that we have the parking spots available and so, and so forth. So I just want to make sure that we're all fair to everyone. And then also another question for you, you got two buildings in there, you're saying that you don't have plans right now?
For these two?
Yes.
They're going to be retail, commercial, they'll be shops. They're not, they're not residential, commercial buildings, just more, more retail shop space.
Why aren't you guys having a hard time? Didn't you guys say in some of the meetings that we have like springs underneath the parking spots and things like that? We have water issues?
So there's, there's not springs. So one of the things that came up, and we talked about this early on, was right now onsite, there's, there's virtually no storm sewer within the parking lot. So if you go to Walmart or Kroger, yeah, you, you see inlets sitting in the, in the dry aisles and in the parking lots to pick up that surface water. There's, there's basically nothing out here in this whole section of parking lot. So as we started working on the pond, which was the first phase, we started seeing just a, a lot of water weeping out from that stone underneath and that subsurface underneath the parking lot. So while you do have drainage around the perimeter of the site and these ditch lines, you've got water that's coming off this bank here and you've got all the surface water that's sitting here that's basically infiltrating into some of those, into some of those areas as the parking lot has not been maintained over the years. And you're getting a lot of subsurface. Now, we've had to put in storm sewer and storm drainage as we've done these improvements. We've done some here, we've done some when we, when we were working on the bank as well.
And there's new buildings that require that as well. And I think the idea when they started was if you start cutting holes just to put tree islands in and not putting storm water to go in, you're actually making the problem worse when you're building a building and doing something where you can capture that water and then route it, you know, over where it is, which is what the bank did essentially where that bank building went in, they had to provide storm water and then route that, that stuff over. So you don't, you don't want to punch a lot of holes in the parking lot where there aren't storm drains going in and you don't want to rebuild the whole thing. So where you're doing a building, that water you are going to capture and go in and do it. Those bigger areas, I think the idea was more if you, if you build a building and you're cutting in, you're putting in storm water to take that water and you're putting in drains and all of the stuff you'd normally see. If you just cut a hole and plant a tree or a bush in the middle of the parking lot that doesn't have a storm drain attached to it, that, that, that's a little, is that an active way of saying it?
Yes.
That's a little more problematic from a, the longevity of the parking lot and what you're doing with all that surface water than it's going to interact with that pool you put without, without stormwater.
So I'm not an engineer, but when you're talking about that, you're, you were talking about you were going to redirect the water to the sewer lines and, and stuff like that. So does that mean that you're going to put the water in the sewer lines or the storm water?
You, you, not sewer, not, not sanitary sewer, you'd put it in the storm sewer. So any of this new build back here would have new storm water or new storm sewer that would tie out and get back into the, to the drainage ditch back here in the back. What we had to do here in the bank, we had to connect some drop inlets around the bank and tie back into the storm sewer that's along Market Street. That's exactly what would hap, that's exactly what would happen with the hotel and these shops A, or these shops right through here. So in any of these areas that we've been developing, we've been stubbing out storm sewer that would allow for future connections in to get all that, all that water piped or as much of that water piped as we can off the site and then down into the storm water management facility.
You were talking about that, that the trees were going to need a stormwater abilities for the water to go down. So there may be chances that you can actually even use part of those properties for green space, correct?
Part of the other?
The two pieces of property you got right there.
These two?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've, we've actually talked, Mr. Rector's actually looking at some green roof opportunities. You know, there's, there's a company here in, at Ryan that does live roofs, that does some of the green roof containers. So that would actually help with our storm water management as well. So there, there, there would be, you know, we would have some tree islands, just as Mr. Hubbard was bringing up in the rendering, you would have tree islands in this area right there. But again, all that's going to be attaching and connecting in. Any of that subsurface drainage is going to be connecting into foundation drains around those buildings and then piped out.
Are you really going to have, how much of green, of green space are you going to have now housing the rooftops?
We'll be back to the 19%. Yeah, that's required.
All right.
I think what you're, to Mr. Cowan and Mr. Simone, who's are trying to say is, we have many, before anyone in this room was in this room doing what we're doing, this marketplace was built and we have many acres of completely impervious area, no storm water collection or conveyance. That's what you have out there now.
That's accurate.
So it's to distill what you're saying.
Yeah, it's a big sheet, except where we cut holes in it and then we have to deal with any place we change it.
And as you're developing those internal parcels, you're collecting and conveying that storm water, which, you know, is an improvement from that standpoint. Anyway, this one, that's what we've got up there now, is acres and acres, literally acres of 100% off almost, .9 to be exact. But there's no collection and conveyance now. Anything that's done internally, I guess what you're saying is, as you're doing these developments, internal parcels, you're collecting that storm water and conveying it.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Simms.
And I do have a question and then a statement. Number one, you keep talking about Hotel A, but you, you say, is it in play or not?
No, Hotel A, we didn't change anything. We wanted, we wanted council to see what was originally approved and what, what planning commission is recommended. So Hotel A is out.
Okay. And that, to that point?
Stormwater stays like it is.
Okay. And to that point, and Mr. Rector has been, he's done, you know, from, from, from my standpoint, he's been very transparent with his ask, and I'll just make a statement, it's not a question. I'm, I'm a little concerned, and you said yourself that you had some concerns with the scale and, and height and so forth of that hotel. So I just hope that wasn't a red herring that was thrown in there to distract a 210-foot structure on the front, sort of a red herring to distract from a 187-foot structure in the back.
No, when we looked at this one, what, Mr. Rector has been, has been asking about development on this parcel for about a year and a half. So he's had interest from restaurants, from retail, from hotel to do that. The issue is, and we had this discussion with planning commission, in order to build something over top of that storm water management facility, that's a regional facility that's serving everything upstream, and, and there was a lot of back and forth with, with town engineering staff.
A lot of those.
So for us to do anything over top of that, it was going to be extremely expensive. To do anything to cover that cost, you've got to get a high density yield on those hotel rooms.
And it's the previous five, it's right at the front.
It is, but I just, I just make it a statement, so far it's been very transparent and it just makes me wonder. And I do, I will say, I'm not going to state my position on it, although I think it's a great idea to have residential where you have the retail and so forth. But I just want to make the statement, if he's watching tonight, it's been great to work with him. I just hope that was not a red herring to, to, okay, they'll call this, but that'll take the attention away from, okay.
And I have to kind of agree with that because I have been seeing a little bit about things that he's been trying to do even within the last year. And some of the stuff, like he's coming out over here and asking for all this ordinance, but when we're talking about that, we were having even a hard time with the signs that were like less than 80 feet high. Now we're talking about over 200 feet high. And now we're still talking about 185 feet high down here. So I really, really would like to see what the difference is between this, the height of this building in numbers and comparison to the bank building. Because I do think, I am still concerned with the green space. I know that you keep talking about green boxes and trees up on rooftops and things like that. I can tell you from someone that worked with someone with a lot of money in the past, those boxes and those trees didn't last too long. And so that's another one of the concerns. One of the things that you've built these trees, I may not be too smart as far as engineering things or whatever, but I can always tell you the trees are planted for reasons. And, you know, and the reality is that because you're trying to follow on this, is that a special height that those trees need to be? Because it doesn't seem like we are coming out with a number of square feet or how high they have to be. Because, I mean, a tree, I can buy a magnolia tree that is a dwarf, and I actually have one of those, and it doesn't grow more than four feet high. So will that be considered a tree?
The town has landscaping standards that we have to follow for, for any of the commercial developments.
Six foot tall minimum.
At, at planted height.
Yes, right. And there's certain varieties that are allowed.
And, and, and Ms. Hicks, the, so the green space is not changing from the original approval. So based on planning commission's recommendation, the only things that they're still, you know, what we'll be using for green space calculations is the same what was approved before.
So it was 19, because this is where I'm getting confused. So it's 19 the number we're giving you, but does that, that doesn't include any rooftops or no boxes?
It included rooftops beforehand. Any green rooftops were, were included in the original approval.
Do you know what the percentage is?
We, we don't, we don't know because not all the buildings have been designed yet.
Well, you have the green space right there. Do you know how much that is?
Well, if you, if you did everything that's shown on this plan right here and take away Hotel A, you're over 19%.
Probably over 20%.
Yeah. So that's why we didn't really have any, you know, we didn't have any problems with planning commission saying we're going to stick, you know, we're going to keep it at the 19% that was originally approved. Because if the residential buildings do go in, there will be, there will, there will be rooftop areas on there that's just going to add to that overall percentage of green space that we had originally planned for. So losing, losing Hotel A and gaining that green space that's out there right now is the biggest, is the biggest change in acreage and percentage.
Can we go back to the parking garage, maybe a couple slides back? I'd like to know exactly where that is and how many decks are, how many, how many cars are there?
Um, so.
Go back, go back some more.
So let me, so the decks exist right here, right in these areas?
And can we go back maybe a couple more?
So that's, that's the first slide, Mr. Hubbard.
Okay, okay, I want to go to the other.
That's the, those are the, you can see up here, this is parking deck B. So that's the one that sits in this area in between the market rate and the independent living right here. So you've got over top or underneath the independent living, so that's residence C right here. So you have commercial space on the ground floor, you'd have two levels of parking, and then your residential floor is above that. And you can see the, the little trees on top of the, the parking lot there, which is what you're seeing right here. That's level four that you're, that you're seeing. Parking deck B is strictly a parking, parking deck, you would have some commercial space.
Where exactly is that?
Parking deck B is right here. So it's in between residence B and residence C. So it would be a standalone deck, you'd have commercial on the ground floor, but you'd have one, two, three, four, five levels of, of parking there in between the two buildings.
About 20 cars per level?
No, no, much more than that. I'll, let me find that real quick, Mr. Hubbard, and I'll, I'll tell you, I've got that in there.
For deck B, Steve?
Yeah, for deck B.
Deck B has 22 on the first level, then 82, 82, and 78 for level, about 80. Once you get off the first level and the ramp and above the, the ground floor, it's about 80 per level. It's 264 total parking.
264?
Yeah. That's in the structure right here.
And there's connection right there, they can go from the parking deck to the, to the building with the.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Do Mr. Rector also mention something about to provide more spaces for people not be able to use actually cars, that he could possibly, he was thinking about even the possibility of even building a bus stop there. Is he willing to pay the expenses of the, that route?
So there's already, there's bus service along Market Street right now. So there's bus pull-off for BT. What Mr. Rector was talking about was having a, a private van or a private bus service for, for the independent living facility like you'd see at some, like at Warmtharth. Warmtharth has a bus, you know, that will take residents to doctor's appointments or the grocery stores. That's, that's what he was talking about in that, in that part of the conversation to six.
And there is still not the ability to be able to get from this side of the buildings to even the malls or Walmart because there's still no sidewalks to get there, correct?
Well, I mean, I believe at that intersection, I believe there's pedestrian, there's pedestrian signals there, right, Andrew?
So you can get to the mall from there?
You couldn't get across to the mall. Yes, ma'am. And, and there is sidewalk connections all the way through the property, you know, to get you out to that intersection. There's, there's no direct way to get to Walmart without going through the mall and then back over.
Go over to the edge there and cross over.
But I would imagine any shuttle service they had would probably include, just like the, the Bushford Transit has now, I mean, they, they make a dedicated run and they'll stop at the mall, they'll stop here and there. So, I mean, and that's at his nickel.
Yes, sir.
The private shuttle.
The private shuttle would be, yes, sir.
That's probably this, we call it, sort of the bus service.
Yeah, private shuttle.
Yeah.
Because it would be one of those smaller shuttles.
So you're now talking about the town shuttle that we pay like 350,000 a year?
No, I think the owner of the retirement group would have their shuttle for residents to take them out. And obviously those residents would also be taxpaying town residents that could also use the, the town shuttle service and the town bus service through the BT chain.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will close the public hearings. We will go to the consent agenda. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
On the consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes of the September 28th, 2020 meeting, approval of the purchase of 200 dump truck bodies at the amount of 203,140. Schedule a public hearing on December the 14th, 2021 for a conditional use permit for our three multifamily residential district uses in the B3 general business by MFF Holdings LLC at 95 Patricia Lane, tax parcel 501-1-26B. The purpose is to reconfigure the former daycare building into seven multifamily units. Property is designed as business commercial on the future land use map of the 2013 comprehensive plan.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
A motion to second. Any discussions, comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
One second, please. Okay, yes, please.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scherlauter.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stites.
Aye.
That is six A. Thank you very much. We have no introductions and presentations tonight. Next, we will open the floor for citizens' comments. Three minutes.
This is actually why I came tonight. Evidently, there's been a rash of campaign sign stealing within the town. And apparently, it's the town that's doing it. Evidently, there's some ordinance, now I haven't had a sign taken, but there's some ordinance, talking to town staff, the right-of-way that you're pulling the signs from is kind of vague. I was told by town staff that the only way to know truly where the right-of-way of the town is, which is still on a person's private property that they own, you just have the right-of-way, you know, water pipes burst or something else, is to go to the courthouse and get a plat and hire a surveyor. So you're expecting people to know about the ordinance, comply with the ordinance, to express their First Amendment right to say this is who I want to win the election. And three of you up there passing ordinance that requires all political candidates to comply with the Financial Disclosure Act. And three of you couldn't even complete and follow a one-page form and do what it said that you all signed. That you expect every citizen in the town to understand your ordinance and go hire a surveyor so they can stick a sign in their yard.
So those signs weren't stolen, Mr. Waltz, they were collected, and if I'm not mistaken, don't leave, I'm talking to you.
Oh, I'll work for you now, Mayor?
No, but if you want the right to come and talk, you ought to be able to listen to the explanation. They were not stolen, they were placed down here, all but two of those signs have been returned to the owners. Thank you.
If you come take something off somebody's private property without their permission, it's stealing. And not to mention, Mayor, why not go to them and say, hey, their sign's not in compliance?
Thank you, Mr. Waltz. Anyone else to address counsel?
I just wanted to make a comment that there were.
This is not under consent.
This is a comment, John.
You can make that comment in your section.
I know, but I was just going to say about the public comments that we did have tonight.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan Derrick, five nine five Arrowhead Trail, I wasn't sure where he lived, he didn't announce it, I thought we're supposed to.
He got it earlier when he came and spoke to the other part of it.
As far as signs, I heard somebody speak earlier, and it's like, I know people I spoke to, there's signs being put on property without asking permission, they're just sticking them here, sticking them there, and then, then you ask for permission. After you put the sign where it doesn't belong because you didn't ask permission, but that's not why I'm here. I had a little gathering with Ms. Hicks at my home, and I'm still perplexed and trying to figure out why, why you want to be mayor. You have four children, which keeps you busy. You come to meetings with stacks of paperwork, you ask tons of questions. It appears you're not prepared for the, for the meeting because you bring all these questions forward and shuffle through papers. I mean, even tonight, you had to look at the minutes before you took a vote on it, and that should have been, that, we all come here to do business. We don't come here to ask questions. Everybody comes here prepared for the meeting, but it appears that you don't. And some of the statements you said, you told me that schools in Colombia, South America are better than schools in Christiansburg. You don't like to park, you don't like the aquatic center. You know, I get the feeling you don't like living here, and that's why I'm asking why, why you want to be mayor. And on your sign, you are leadership that listens. Anytime there's a meeting and someone's speaking, you got to interrupt. You got to get your point across. I know when you, early on, when you campaigning for the water, I bet thirty times you interrupted people, and what about the water bill? What about the water bill? What about the water bill? And I mean, everybody here got tired of hearing what you were saying because it wasn't appropriate. I brought this book, you said you had one, Robert's Rules to Order. When other adults are speaking, we sit and listen, we don't try and interrupt. So I really don't think you're ready for, for mayor. But that's my, my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I will close up the comments, we'll go to committee reports. Street committee, nothing? I don't think we had any committee meetings, I think you have, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, say we have a, our meeting, I don't know who's chairman, she is, you are, you change every year, okay.
The odds of what was it?
Yes. There's a meeting.
There's a meeting on?
Eleven thirty.
Okay. Any other? I'm sorry. Any other committee comments? Thank you. Discussion in action by Mayor and Council, have a major home occupancy conditional use permit for a single-chair salon in the agriculture zoning district at seven twenty-five Stafford Drive on tax parcel four oh five dash A dash eight. Property was designated as residential on the future land use map of the two thousand thirteen comprehensive plan. Look, that public hearing was held two weeks ago at council, and I don't think anyone spoke against it. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the condition use permit for seven twenty-five Stafford Lane.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sherwood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Stites.
Aye.
That is six oh, I think. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Do we need this?
No, you're done.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay. I'm not sure who in the right mind would want to. Resoning from our three multifamily residential to B-three general business, to the B-three general business by the Montgomery Museum and Lewis Miller Regional Arts Center, Montgomery Museum Art History at three hundred Pepper Street, tax parcel five twenty-seven A dash two thirty-five. Property is designated as part open space in the map of the two thousand thirteen comprehensive plan.
I so moved to approve the rezoning for the Montgomery Museum and Lewis Miller Regional Arts Center as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sherwood.
Aye.
Councilman Stites.
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you very much. Discussion of opioid release, Randy, I believe that was yours?
Basically, we were approached by Montgomery County in regards to the opioid release. We've got a draft resolution in regards to that. As I understand it, the town of Christiansburg would not be eligible for that money, it's only eligible for counties and cities, although us signing the, basically the waiver for those manufacturers would increase the pool of money that Virginia would get, and therefore the amount of money that Montgomery County would get.
I reviewed the ordinance or the resolution, and I recommend that we adopt it as a council. I'll make, or make a motion that we adopt it.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, any discussion?
I'd just like to add that I, I think it's great that even though we are not getting cash in hand, that we're still supporting the county that we're in. So I appreciate this being pulled together.
We still don't even know, we, we may get money from it.
But currently, as today.
At this point, it doesn't look like it, however, if anything's possible.
Yep.
Madam Clerk.
And it's kind of going in the right direction, no matter who gets the money and who answers that, because it's something that's needed.
That's right.
Anything else? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sherwood.
Aye.
Councilman Stites.
Aye.
Aye.
Six oh. Staff reports, town manager.
Got one more item under, item D.
It's what?
Consideration of ordnance creating.
Oh, yeah, we've got to do that. Consideration of ordinance creating New River Valley Passenger Rail Station authority and authorizing execution of agreement setting forth rights and obligations of authority members.
I'll put a motion out there to approve the ordinance and the agreement. The four-page agreement is very generic, and it provides, even us as the host locality, it provides equal representation. It's very similar to every other authority that we have. So in reviewing both documents, I put that out there as a motion to adopt both the ordinance and the agreement as, as included in our agenda packet.
I'll second. Motion to the second, any discussion?
Yeah, so we haven't done the study yet for the, finished the study for the rail thing. Do we actually know where it's going right now?
But really, in my understanding, it doesn't have anything to do with forming the authority or not, we've got to have the authority in able to build and, and wherever it goes. We've got to have the authority in, in order to start the process. Is that correct, as far as you can understand?
And this is, this is starting it all off, I would say.
Correct.
Okay.
But, but then, we're talking about forty thousand dollars annually, and we still don't even know where it's going.
Well, it makes no difference, we could go in the middle of Riner, but if we're in that authority as a host city, then we have to share by population, we have to share our, our proper cost. We have the same shares as Blacksburg and Montgomery County and the town of Christiansburg will support seventy-eight, seventy-six percent, is that my, my understanding on?
Between the three, I think they were at like nineteen percent each for county Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and Virginia Tech.
Okay.
And the voting, if, if basically ownership shares, we had discussions about that, that basically we would wait the, the votes of the members according to their participation on the committee.
Do we have any idea yet of where it may be going? Because we know it's going to the Virginia line, do you have any idea, Randy, Michael Barber?
The service has to go on the Virginia line, the station could either go on the Virginia line or along the Cambria line that basically comes from Cambria and crosses North Franklin Street and Pepper's Ferry Road.
So it's pretty evident it's not going in Riner, huh?
Well, it's definitely not going in Cambria, because I just checked with, with transportation just the other day again. So it is going on the Virginia line, do you have, do you?
I think we're getting off topic here.
Yeah, we're, we're not talking about.
Well, we're talking about joining something that we're going to be paying forty thousand dollars a year, don't you think it's a good idea?
So you wouldn't support the rail if it was put in Riner? You wouldn't support being part of the authority?
Well.
Yes or no?
I don't know, because right now we pay like sixty thousand north to Virginia Tech Airport, and a lot of people don't even fly in and out of there.
Do you want to explain for the fifth time the Virginia Tech Airport tour?
I'm done, I'm done.
We've been here for two years. Madam Clerk?
Let's move.
Would you take a vote?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sherwood.
Aye.
Councilman Stites.
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you.
Why did you vote aye for it? I'm just curious. You, you made such a hoodoo about how we shouldn't be part of this, and how it's like the Virginia Tech Airport, and if it was in Riner and we don't know where it's going, you wouldn't support it, but you voted aye.
Because we have the chance of getting out, right? We do, we do. Because this is a contract thing that we can get out, right, Randy?
I would think that we could actually, the authority, yes.
All right, so if right now.
But you just said you would vote no for it, that's what you said, listen, a minute ago.
I said I would vote no on it if I didn't know exactly where, you know.
And we don't know, and you said you would vote no.
Well, I know, but it's going on the, on the Virginia line, so it's.
All right, I'm done.
Goodness gracious.
Randy, town manager's report.
Just like to point out that Blacksburg Transit, through our transit working group, we are looking at eliminating the, the commuter route and suspending service November first. We would utilize the two-trail trolley service and advertise that, for that service. Also, go anywhere will be back to pre-COVID levels, which is Monday through Friday, seven AM to five forty-five PM, and Saturday, nine thirty to four forty-five. Both those changes will happen November first. Give you an update on College Street drainage. As you recall, we conducted a, a study of the basin last year, and the town has currently a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget for design. Today's staff met with the consultant, AMT, and discussed grant possibilities such as FEMA's flood preparedness grant. That's a seventy-five percent grant, although however, to be eligible, you'd have to actually be in a one-hundred-year designated floodplain, which that area is not. Another possibility we mentioned is the possibility, because it's not in the floodplain, of seeking a resiliency grant, basically, and doing a resiliency plan. That would make you eligible for potentially additional monies, and that's what we plan on doing, we plan on submitting an application for that by November fifth is when they're due, and we're going to pursue that. Having a resiliency plan, like I say, it's required for certain funding opportunities and help, help secure grant opportunities. We'd like to budget for a capital project beginning next fiscal year, although if we can obtain grant funding, we recommend delaying a year if it would save a tremendous amount of town resources. Suggest allocating for capital needs next fiscal year and placing in reserves as a match if a year delay is needed to secure significant grant funding. This is not going to be a cheap project, it's going to be in the millions, and no matter what the final alternative is chosen, just let you know that. Town staff is going to be reaching out to property owners to discuss easement opportunities too. We, we've done that previously last year. I think most of the property owners are open to dedicating easements, but we'll basically be pursuing that a little bit further.
Randy, we're still looking at it, if one property owner does not agree, it's basically the.
That's, we did have one property owner through the channel say that they wouldn't cooperate with dedicating easements. You know, we're going to have, I guess, another, another round of talks with property owners in the area. I do think if we were to pursue areas for, for stormwater ponds, the town should consider paying for those, because they don't, would be in the conference on the property. I tend to agree, if it's the channel, the town, the town would probably rather not pay to basically improve people's property for them. And obviously, we don't want to have to condemn to do that, too.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. So then?
Got, got one other item?
Okay.
Holidays that we've got coming up, November twenty-third is the week of Thanksgiving, that would be our, our second meeting in November. We typically have canceled that meeting, would that be council's wishes for that meeting?
Yes.
The, the second meeting in December would be December twenty-eighth. That is not the same week as Christmas, although it's the week between Christmas and New Year's. Typically, that has fallen on Christmas week, this week, this year it's the, the week after Christmas. I was going to ask council's feeling on that, and, and I guess before you answer, one thing I'll point out, of course, we've got three outgoing council members. I guess personally, I always kind of think it'd be nice to maybe get current council members together with outgoing council members. How do you feel about that? Would you like some type of maybe social event that week?
I think there's a lot of family stuff going on, and it, it makes it a real challenge, I know it does for me, between work and family.
So you click it to cancel?
I, I would, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that as well.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Cancel both, both those meetings, what we're looking at. Would, would council be interested in some type of social event with incoming council, whether it's in December or January?
I'm open to it.
Yeah.
When is the, the meeting in December? When does it happen? Do you know, it's a late down.
Fourteenth is the first, is the only, I think the only scheduled night of meetings.
For December?
For December.
I would say, I would say it's really easy to say yes now, and I don't know, with the gray hair I've got now, when the time comes to actually do it, that is an extremely busy time. And then you get into the new year, and you're physically, emotionally exhausted, and the new council. If something is held, I very may well attend, but I would prefer, I just know how it's, how I'm going to feel when we get to that point. And I personally, I've told you my sentiments, it's just time to pass the reins, and let the, let the new folks come in, that's my personal thought. But it'd be easy to say yes now, when the time gets here, we're all exhausted. You know, from Thanksgiving all the way through the second week of January, everyone's depleted. And distracted is probably a good word, a good distraction, but it's emotionally and physically draining. I don't want to add a pile on, personally, I, that's just me.
Okay.
Can I have a view for a minute? Is what we're saying, that we're going to have one meeting in November and one meeting in December, that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Just want to make sure.
I'm sure as council, if we can't, if we have something we need to look at, we can schedule.
We can count, we can call a meeting.
For instance, the, if we need it, when Randy reaches out to us, we could do one back-to-back, the seventh and the fourteenth, as long as there's time to-
Oh, the fourteenth and the twenty-first, Stephen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. TBD, Randy, TBD.
All right.
Is it it? Reed?
Love to report, Mayor, thank you.
Any other staff here to report? Hearing none, council reports. Mr. Stipes?
You touched on it, though, Mayor, it's very sad that our fire chief and his wife lost their son Dylan. Dylan was a classmate of one of my sons, and it's a, it's a great family and a big loss to the community. I appreciate you mentioning that, I just wanted to mention that we're all sad about the, the untimely passing of Dylan Hanks.
Michelle?
I have nothing to port, but I just want to check with Randy, because I know we're going to go into closed session and adjournment, so don't forget. Randy, what, I know just maybe five years ago, previous to Marissa coming on board, and I believe Sam too, we took a look at our ordinances for developments, do you remember? And we took some action on that. How long ago was that? Do you remember?
Um, it's probably been about five, six years ago.
Okay, because I know for the past year and a half, I know Joanna's been, and, you know, you're interested in increasing green space, you're increasing parking and stormwater requirements, right? You've mentioned that almost for your first year, so possibly maybe not with our council who's getting ready to leave, but that be a work session, since it's been so long, and, or at least it'll have to be presented to council. How would work? It would go to Planning Commission, if council says we want to increase green space for all developments, we want to increase parking, and we want to increase stormwater requirements. Because that's, that's been your message for the past two years. But I think it should be something that's first on the council's agenda in January, whether they want to proceed forward to update those.
We set up a study on it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Sherwalter, like, talking about what you were saying, I'm not wanting to increase them, I'm actually just wanting to follow the ordinances that we have. Because, for example, the twenty percent for the green space, I'm okay with it.
Right, and that's something we can discuss with the new council members, whether we want to go forward or not. But I know that's been a constant-
Yeah, but you were saying that I want more, I don't want more, I just want to follow the codes. You know, if we have these ordinances in place, it's not fair to do some things for some and not for others. I'm gonna change the rules for everyone.
All codes and ordinances, building, whatever, right?
Building.
That's what you want to follow?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you broke that up, so, thank you.
Right, so, Dan.
What's happening?
I just have two points. One thing, I want to make sure that everybody knows this, that the, the mayor's debate is gonna be Thursday night at seven o'clock. And, Mr. Winkler, could you help me out on that, on how people can make sure they get into a, you know, it'll be-
If you'd like to comment, you'd have to visit the League of Women Voters homepage, and basically sign up to comment through their page. We'll also live stream it on our Facebook page, so if you just basically Google town of Christiansburg Facebook page, you can find it and watch it through that, or like I say, you could watch it through the League of Women Voters site.
Thank you. And the, the other thing I had would be the sidewalks over there, I'm not sure what the little park is called, right in front of the post office, that we're gonna put the signs in, and I, I think it's the Public Works put the sidewalks in. And whoever did it, they did a good job, and it was-
We, we had contractors do the work.
Oh, contractor, okay. If you haven't seen it yet, it's just worthwhile, and, and it came out out there, and I thought it was gonna come out.
Okay, and they wanna, and they know about-
Mr. Bishop, do you have anything?
No.
Ms. Hicks?
Yes, I had the pleasure of talking with a few people over the last week from Parks and Rec, and I just want to commend them for what they do for all the citizens, especially on the weekends. So when the rest of us are chilling out and running errands, they're working on the town, putting up a stage, and they do this in addition to their forty hours a week. So I just want to give a shout out to them for their dedication, and they, they always pull through. We've never been disappointed, our events just get a lot of comments, and people love them. And so I just want to just say thank you to, to them for the planning and the execution. Thanks.
Ms. Hicks?
Yeah, I wanted to also say the same, very similar to what Mr. Stipes said. It was definitely a very sad week for a lot of us, year in the loss of Mr. Hanks' son, it just hits home. And we are just praying for them, and obviously it's been a rough week for me, too. My husband was really sick. And then I also wanted to make a comment about repeating to what Mr. Sherwalter had asked, why did I vote for the trail passenger rail system? The one thing that I like about that is that it frees up our roads from traffic, and it brings a lot of population, and it takes them out of here in a safe way. Or personally, I feel like the train is a safe way, as I am upset that it's not coming to Cambria. Like, I really would like it to come to Cambria. And I, and I was very sad to hear, and that's why I keep checking with these organizations to see, is there a chance that it will ever come? And I know that the response hasn't been positive as far as stand for, so that's why I voted yes, and that, and that's why I'm so kind of upset, I wish there was something else that we could do to make sure that the passenger rail was coming closer to home, so.
Thank you.
And then I also wanted to make a comment about, it's kind of tiring to hear about this political heat jobs of some of this, some of these friends are coming over here, and even the wife of Mr. Barber said to me on, on an event the other day, just because I asked questions about the bills, I hope that that stops. That's it.
Well, we'll start there with you, I mean, you review all, you review all the bills every month before, every month, every month.
We all need to talk about this in here.
Oh, this is my time to talk, thank you. This is my section. Do you review the bills to be paid every month?
I do.
Good. Well, it appears that in May, June, and July, the same bill appeared in the same spot to be paid, and you never questioned it. It couldn't be that it's because of the election and to cast a bad light on, on anything, but anyway. With that, is there anything else to come before council? We'll go into closed meeting. Sam?
Yes. Request for a closed meeting under Code of Virginia 2.2-711A3 for this discussion of consideration of the, of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion and open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of potential acquisition of property in the downtown Chrisburg area, that is form of a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you. We'll go into closed session, I'm gonna, we're gonna take about a three, three, four-minute recess in our, our council chambers. Recording?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Yours was not on.
So, we're going, we're now reconvening in open session, do I have certification?
Yeah, I so moved to certify that the town council, the town council of town of Chrisburg meeting in closed meeting to the best of each member's knowledge, discuss on the matters lawfully exempt from open meetings. Requirements by the Virginia law and all these such matters are, as are identified in the resolution to enter to a closed meeting.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
You all right, Sam? Got a mo, got a motion in the second, any discussion?
I got those right over here, I'm sorry.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
The council's not gonna take any action at this point. Anything else to come before council?
Just to mention, there were a couple of public comments under the agenda today, and I guess those will be within the agenda package for next week, correct?
You all have a copy of them at your, at your spot, and this is regarding the marketplace property, so I'd ask you to be familiar with those before we go. Nothing else? We're adjourned.